Okay, thank you. We're a little bit late tonight since there are a few tornadoes, but let it not be said that the planning board staff is unable to make it through, no matter what the elements, whatever they throw at us, we're here. So anyway, we're off and running here about 7:15. Our first item is a request for an amendment. This is on Chapua Crossing. It's a retail site plan, office parking management plan. So we have a request in connection with, the applicant has asked for some relief from the requirement to run the jitney. At this point, the understanding is that they were required to run the jitney once the AFFH housing was open and COO was granted. So they've asked for some relief. Apparently, the ridership is quite low, although I don't know if we have the numbers yet. Do you have those?
No, I do not.
Okay. So we understand based on representation from the applicant that ridership is very low and they're asking for relief. The town board has passed a resolution granting 60 days.
Temporary relief, yeah.
Thirty days. Excuse me. So Sabrina, maybe you can fill us in because you drew up the resolutions and worked with the town board on this.
So ultimately, the applicant went to the town board. They submitted the letter that you have before you stating that they're expending a lot of money to run a shuttle where they don't feel it's an opportune time to run the shuttle. The Chapua Crossing site is under construction. They are using a temporary school bus as the means to transport people. They would like to temporarily suspend the service. However, they have promised to arrange transportation for those that are using the shuttle or wish to use the shuttle so that they can get to where they need to go if they are counting on the shuttle. We haven't received any details from the applicant about how they plan to do that. But the town board is reluctant to, the town board approved the temporary suspension per communication with my office, provided the planning board was in support of the temporary suspension.
Right. And I think there was a requirement that they needed to communicate this to potential users as well.
Correct.
Tell them how we're going to do this.
There's several different processes that need to be put into place and to date, I have not received any information from them about this.
There's a two-week period, the suspension, according to the town board resolution, would start on October 15th.
And run for 30 days.
Thirty days, November 15th.
Okay.
This emanates from generally a condition in the 2015 site plan approval for the retail, which talked about adoption of a parking management plan, which addressed, among other things, jitney service, didn't have any details in the resolution condition itself. The parking management plan was amended as of November of 2015 to include the details that they're seeking relief from. I don't think we have a finally accepted parking management plan yet. So in terms of if the board is willing to consider this request, I have prepared a very, very short resolution, which essentially dovetails what the town board adopted and reflects the fact that it is related to condition 63 and that it will be the same 30-day period, subject to the same conditions that the town board has imposed. And I have that.
Right, right.
So in 30 days, does shuttle service automatically restart?
Unless they get a further extension, which is contemplated, the possibility.
And when did they start providing the shuttle service? And how did that dovetail with occupancy in the Kupala Building?
They started the shuttle service when they received the COO for the Kupala Building to start occupying that building, which was at the beginning, I want to say April.
And so do we know how many apartments were occupied at that time when they started it? Was it just a handful and now are they?
When they started, it was just a handful. Today, all of the, my understanding is that all of the workforce and all of the affordable units are occupied. But I do not believe that all of the market rates are occupied. You know, the site is under construction. It's very difficult and there's really nothing to go to the site for and the site is really taking people from the site.
So I admit to being a little bit confused because I thought that the purpose of the shuttle service was to bring people to the Chapua Hamlet.
Correct.
Not bring people to the Chapua Crossing retail.
Correct.
So their request on their letter, it's the last paragraph, "Shuttle service until such times a retail complex is 85% complete." What's the logic behind that thinking? I don't understand that. Do you have any idea?
I do not. I can tell you, I had advised that the applicant provide a little bit more detail to us. I can tell you that the advertising for the shuttle has not been, I haven't seen any, you know, the schedule that has been produced was a schedule that was sent to everybody in this year's water billing. I would really like more information from them as to how they're marketing the existing shuttle, how they're working with tenants in the Kupala Building.
Yeah, see, I mean, I could see them asking for suspension until the residential is 85% complete because that's where their ridership is, is in the residential, it seems to me. I've never been convinced that this was going to work anyway, but it's not up to me. And I think it's great that they're willing to go ahead and give it a shot.
I think historically, Tom, when this provision came into being, the applicant had just moved the 28 AFFH units into the Kupala Building, but the balter development was not on the horizon. And I think they just believed that there would be no great haste in building those 28 units so that they wouldn't be forced to implement this shuttle service anytime soon.
And then boom.
And that changed.
Yeah.
So that's kind of how we got here. And the town board has only granted, no matter what they've asked, the town board's only granted them 30 days with the right to come back.
Yeah, well, that seems fine to me. Do you have any idea, when they say alternative transportation, do you know what that means?
Nope.
Somebody like call up and say, "I want a ride"? Do you know how it works?
I don't know what they're talking, I have no sense of what they're going to propose for that.
And do we have any sense of how ridership has changed as occupancy in the building has increased?
I do not have any information.
I mean, it could be that people are just starting to find out about it and just starting to tap into using it now that 40-some-odd apartments or thereabouts are occupied in the Kupala Building.
Correct.
Sabrina, were they invited tonight?
Yes.
It's a little disturbing that they didn't give the detail and they didn't come.
Yeah, I, you know, I would think that maybe what we would want to see is, okay, what's their alternative plan? I mean, and have they come and talked to us about what kind of outreach they made to advertise the fact that this service is now in place before?
All the things that Sabrina's asked for.
Right.
And I think, what, a week or so ago, right? You started asking after the town board made?
Yes, well, and so the board is aware. I mean, one of the things that the town has been working diligently towards is trying to create a relationship with this applicant so the electric shuttle that the town received from our NYSERDA grant could be utilized in place of a carbon shuttle. And we've been trying to come to agreement, you know, I know the town board has been working with the applicant and, you know, there's a great potential future for this use, but we haven't seen a lot of information from the applicant regarding promotion of this, how it relates to the tenancy in the buildings, you know. So I've asked for the information, we haven't received it.
And I think Tom has made a very important point by reminding us that this was all about the hamlet. This was as a result of the AKRF study on the hamlet and it was really to support the Chapua Hamlet. So this is a critical point. I think it's missed frankly in the town board's resolution, which only deals with the Chapua train station. Even the applicant talks in terms of the hamlet. So I guess, Les, you picked it up in your resolution where you've got the hamlet as well as the train station. I think that's critically important that we all remember that, that this is really not just a shuttle service down to the train station, but this was the result of that study and again, trying to support one of our two hamlets.
And that's memorialized in the latest draft of the parking management.
So Tom's point, I think, is critically important.
Yeah, I thought it was, I don't know if it was formally one of the conditions, but I thought it was one of the conditions of zoning approval to do the retail, that this be done because there was concern among the businesses downtown in the hamlet, that they were going to suffer.
Yeah, you're absolutely correct. Absolutely correct. So I think that's important to do. And I think that's why when they give us the information, it should be inclusive so it picks up those points, you know, not just a shuttle service at, you know, 7 o'clock in the morning, one time for the train station, but it's supposed to be supporting the hamlet. So I guess, I don't have a problem with supporting the town board and echoing the town board with our resolution and let the town board figure out along with you, Sabrina, in terms of what they're going to do and what information they're going to supply.
I will reach out to the applicant tomorrow morning, pending the direction this board provides tonight as to following through on this.
Do we need, I guess we need to approve this with a resolution? So we have before us a resolution that Les has prepared. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution?
So move.
Second?
I'm the second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay. We move now to our next item. This is the Ruben Yao, application for a subdivision amendment, Is that rain that we hear? Is that the air conditioning or is that the roof blowing off?
If the roof was blown off, we would know.
Say, Les, if you're headed, if you're headed in the Millwood direction.
Not much better.
I think that's why Millwood's all messed up because all the north-south roads over there.
There's some sort of huge problem on Roaring Brook Road. I don't know what it is.
But Les, you are off the clock now.
Thank you, Les.
Sleep in northern sky at night.
I have one of those in my package.
Can you get this?
Yeah, it's the long line.
More regular.
Yeah, okay. That's what I couldn't.
What they're doing is heading this.
Okay.
Yeah, weird.
Somehow I didn't see that.
That's okay, one last piece of paper to recycle.
Well, maybe I got yours.
Oh, you have two of them.
Is this chips? Is this all white chips?
Yeah, it's just white chips.
You're the only consultant who supplies sound effects.
Yeah, that's good.
That's good.
That's good enough.
Yep, thank you.
It's not real complicated.
Okay. After discussing this with the Rubens and what they wanted to do, you can see.
Here's one. No, it doesn't look.
After discussing with them, they wanted to take this piece here because the whole reason behind this was that they had, excuse me, they had some fences that were there. And this is just to get back what they thought there was their backyard. And supposedly, Mr. Yao, right here, and when he signs the maps and everything, you'll know that he totally approves of what they're doing. You know, I don't talk to Mr. Yao, but they do. And they have to make this, but that's all they want to do, is it. And what they did is I was talking to him about it and we decided that would be the most regular thing we could do, so.
So it returns what they thought was always their backyard and also remedies a non-conforming situation, right?
Yeah.
Correct.
Okay. It's far more regular this time than the last time we saw it. Okay.
It's not a nose anymore.
Yep, right.
How did, do you know what the history is? How old is this house? How did that get built in the rear yard? Do you have any idea?
It's a classic flagline.
Just what it is.
Okay. Sabrina, any? You got some questions or points?
There were a couple of amendments that, or amendments to the plans that still need to be made.
They will be made. They were all, I looked at all of them, they're all fine. There's no problem at all.
One, one point for the board's note is that there's an area within the lot line change, you can see where the, where, if you want to highlight, Michael, the area, nope, further down. If you want to give me that pointer, I'll do it.
Yeah.
Might be easier.
Yeah.
You gotta squeeze it, I don't know why.
So this area from this line here down to this line here, the area within here cannot be counted towards the minimum lot area requirement for the house on this lot. It doesn't meet with the code required standards. So it does not affect the existing property whatsoever, but it's for the note of record that that area is taken out of the minimum lot area calculations.
For coverage and all the other things as well?
Correct, correct. It's hard to work. Other than that, you know, the comments that I had provided is squaring up the building coverage and the development coverage, putting North Arrow on the plan, so on and so forth. So there's a list of 17 comments, two of which relate to secret. Is an unlisted action in accordance with the State Environmental Quality Review Act. We included a negative declaration for your review. And if everything's okay with that, we can look forward.
Okay, very good. Okay. Any questions, comments? Tom Shaw? If not, is there a motion to adopt the make-deck that's been prepared?
So move.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
And then the other issue is whether we wish to waive jurisdiction on this. In the past, we've done that and it seems to me that this would be an appropriate time to waive jurisdiction. I don't think there are any major issues here, any issues really of our end concern. So is there a motion to waive jurisdiction on this?
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Real quick.
Sure.
If, if this area, because I guess it's because it's too narrow.
Correct. It needs to be a minimum of 200 feet wide.
So that would be true for this area also for this lot? This little potential up here?
It's just, we have huge area.
And clearly, that is no problem because lot number one is quite large. The only thing I would, this is not really going to make a difference in what we do, but we might one day end up with an application to put, assuming we pull back here now that there's room for it, but that's neither here nor there, I think. So I have no comments.
Okay. So would you second the?
Second.
The waiver? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, very good. Oh! We have a resolution even though we're waiving it? Okay.
Yeah, you're, you're not waiving the resolution part. You're waiving jurisdiction.
The resolution simply says that, you know, be it hereby resolved, that you're waiving your jurisdiction.
And also, all the other points are now incorporated.
Correct. All the changes, everything.
Prior to the plan.
Oh, wow. Is there a motion to adopt?
We just can't let go.
No.
I can do something.
I put the motion as being the adoption of the resolution, but.
You can change the motion to be the adoption of the resolution and then it'll cover everything.
Whatever, whatever folks want to do.
Let's make the record clear by a motion to adopt the resolution.
Yes.
The jurisdiction.
Yeah, she'll just made that resolution. The motion. Is it?
Second? Second.
All in favor? Aye. Did we limp through that? Sometimes the simplest tasks become Herculean. Okay. We move now to our next item. That's the Chapua Central School District. This is an application for a preliminary subdivision plat, tree removal permit, steep slopes permit, stormwater pollution prevention plan approvals. This is on Button Hook Road and Gary Lane.
Hello, good evening. First thing is Jerry Barrett, who is really our point person on this, is on his way over 120 coming from Armunk.
Okay.
So he's dodging some trees, so he may be another five or 10 minutes before he gets here.
While we wait, are you here for the Millwood veterinarian application?
Me, no.
Okay. Is anyone here for the veterinarian application?
He thought he wouldn't be here till 8:30.
That's not good.
Two minutes.
I think he's in the dead zone. I couldn't reach him by phone, but he was heading over.
We can do the fire extension request.
Sure, we can do that in, I guess, minutes. Why don't we do that and wait for Jerry?
Okay, thanks.
Okay.
Thank you for touching.
Yep. Okay. We'll jump ahead. We have a request from the Newcastle Fire District Number One for an extension request. This is for their subdivision, re-subdivision plat, lot merger, waiver of jurisdiction, site development plan, tree removal permit, stormwater pollution prevention plan, 491, 495 King Street, New York Route 120 and Elm Street. So somewhere in here, we have our request for an extension and I believe Jennifer and Sabrina and Bob, you don't have any issues with this, right? They've indicated that they're moving along. We've all seen that they've taken down the other building. And so is there a motion then to grant the extension that they request?
So move.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I see Jerry just walked in the back, but we can sneak in a couple of minutes just to stay warm here. I don't know if we can, we have to be careful here, make sure we're all here for these appropriate minutes because we're missing Michael Allen, of course.
Well, the first one, it's only you and I.
Yeah, so I don't think we can do that. So July 1, we can't do. We can do July 18.
I had one small change on page five.
Okay.
Line 57, but when it came to the possibility of cannibalizing the town's existing hamlets, not much quantitative information had been provided.
Okay.
Line 57 on page five of six, line 57. But when it came to the possibility of cannibalizing the town's existing hamlets.
Doesn't make a difference.
I'm sorry, what did you say?
No, I just said how appropriate that we're talking about that we're approving this tonight.
Okay, with that change, is there a motion to adopt the minutes of July 18? Fear to say, 2014?
Tom, you seem to, you seem to have a problem.
Well, this is four years ago.
We're finally caught up.
I can't remember what happened yesterday.
As I told Janice, I'm just glad that we're all still alive.
I just put it in because.
I don't remember, I plead advancing dementia. I don't remember any of this. So I'm going to have to, well, I mean, I'm not going to, I'm not going to stop the process or I don't want to see these again.
Should I just not make the change then? I mean, it doesn't.
It's up to you. Yeah, no. Was there a motion to adopt the?
Yeah, with the change.
As amended.
Yeah, as amended, with that one change, that's fine.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Let's try July 21. Do we have, yeah, we can do that. This was a special meeting. Any amendments on this?
No.
If not, is there a motion to adopt the July 21, 2014 minutes?
So move.
Second? All in favor?
Second.
Aye.
Aye, okay. Okay, September 2, 2014? We can take, we can adopt these? Nope?
I have no changes.
Okay. Is there a motion to adopt the minutes of September 2, 2014?
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And I think we can do one more, 2014, yeah, September 8. We can do this. Any changes? Is there a motion to adopt the minutes of September 8, 2014?
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We can do 2017. And we'll call Jerry up. Any changes on the minutes of November 8, 2017?
No, nothing.
Okay. If not, is there a motion to adopt?
Just finished looking through and I don't have any changes.
Okay. Is there a motion to adopt the minutes of November 8, 2017?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Well, that was entertaining, so we're ready for you now, Jerry. It's always something to look forward to, we can return to those later on. So we'll call it again. This is the Chapua Central School District, application for a preliminary subdivision plat, tree removal permit, steep slopes permit, stormwater pollution prevention plan approvals. This is on Button Hook Road and Cary Drive.
Good evening. I'm here this evening with Randy Catches, representing the Chapua School District. I believe John Chow is here as well from the school district. And Jesse Mosley.
Paulie McColl.
Okay. And engineers Bill Beckman and Michael Campbell are also here. So we were last before this board with this project in 16. And at that point, we had gone through quite a few versions of the plan till we got to the point where I think the board felt comfortable with the plan and we were directed to go do our engineering. So what happened was the soil testing began and Campbell Engineering started first, went and found the septic areas, pretty much the areas that we thought they were going to be working in. They had to move one septic on lot one and we'll get there as, Randy can go to view and rotate.
Yeah, I'm trying to do that now.
Up to, up there. Okay, rotates on top. And just keep, just keep going. And so what, the first plan, this plan was filed with the planning board for the May 30 filing date. We were going to come and talk to the planning board in June, but it was determined that some of our information was not quite up to snuff and it was determined that the best thing to do was to go back and work out some of our engineering so we can come back with, maybe just move that coffee cup and I think you're good.
Oh, sorry.
So the plan you see on the top is the 2016 plan, is the plan that the planning board had seen. And, you know, again, we've got the 1,600 lineal foot called the SAC. We've got six lots. And what happened was, as a result of the soil testing, Campbell Engineering went first, did, found their locations for their septic areas, got the soils that would work, had the health department out there, got everything settled. Once they were done, WSPA Engineering followed up with the soil, with the soil testing for the stormwater systems. And there's setbacks that they had to maintain between the septics and all that kind of thing. So they had to go through. So it was quite a rigorous process. We lost the weather, we had to continue that into 17, so finally, they got it. So the things that changed, the things that changed on the plans, and it's, I think you'll see that it's not, it's not significant. For instance, lot one, what happened on lot one was the septic, it was originally proposed here. It didn't work. The shallow bed, bedrock, the septic had to be moved to this area here. Other than that, the layout was the same. Lot two, pretty much the septic got larger. What they, what they found, what the engineers found in terms of soil testing, that the site is controlled by shallow bedrock. And what happened was the septics all got larger, the stormwater management areas, they all got larger. In the end, we ended up having to disturb an additional two acres of land area that previously we didn't. But as we, we'll come full circle, that we were able to increase, as a net-net, when we're all done, we increased our open space, protected space by 1.7 acres over this plan. So this was the first plan. But again, we had a protected area that was just in the back. back, in the circumference. At this time, the protected area is gonna include all of these fingers going up between the lots. I know Mr. Coleman was concerned, that he liked those wildlife corridors in between those, plus it'll help create that established look of the neighborhood, these areas will be protected, there's not gonna be any activity allowed in there, other than normal maintenance. So, septic area got bigger, pretty much the same layout in Lot 2. Lot 3, pretty much the same layout, but again, you could see the septic areas here, and you could see how much bigger it got. When you see these septics, this means primary, this means reserve. So the dotted area would represent the primary, and the clear areas, the reserves. You could, we had to adjust some of the lot lines, for instance, Lot 2, the septic had to shift over into Lot 3, so we had to adjust the lot lines. On Lot 4, we ran into some trouble, we had to change the approach, 'cause the septic area ended up being here, and so what we had to do is, we had to change the approach to the side, otherwise, it's the same layout, we just moved the driveway to the side to allow the septic area to be in the front yard. Lot 5, it's pretty much the same layout as you see, except again, the septic area got larger, and Lot 6 is pretty much the same. So, it's substantially the same plan, except we had to make adjustments to get the engineering to work. So with that, I'll go into the current plans. So you can exit out of that. Close all. Okay, now the submission. And then I would go down to the SP1 Existing Conditions Plan. Try counter this time. So the Existing Conditions Plan, it just shows, you know, what's out there, where all the trees are, where it's located in the R1A zone. I think Randy, Randy, we can move right into the site plan, 'cause it's very difficult to see this plan at this scale. So the next one would be the Zoning Conformance Plan. And what we had done is, we had gone through the plan, and we had gone lot by lot, and we've, we've worked out the zoning conformance chart, and the development coverage chart, we have color-coded everything, and the bottom line is, we have a zoning compliant layout for this, for the zone. Next one. Site plan. So, this is the site plan, that it is substantially the same plan that you just saw on the comparative plan, except obviously, it's been tuned up a little bit, it's been finalized. All the lots are pretty much the same, the layouts, primary septic, these are the homes, these are the pools and the cabanas, these are the driveways, this is the road. Septic areas, the, is the primary with the reserve, and that happens on each one of the lots. And you could faintly see, there's all the stormwater, and Bill Beckman will talk more about the stormwater, but Bill has worked through the entire site, he's provided drywells and storage vaults on each lot, that discharge to level spreaders, he's provided an infiltration basin, a water quality basin, a detention basin. He's been working very closely with the town engineer, a lot of back and forth on that, and hopefully, we're on track with that, I hope, and we're getting closer. So, what happened with this plan was, everything you see in green now is protected space. So this is like a 20-acre site, 10 acres of that are gonna be in protected space, that's gonna be managed by the homeowners association, they'll, we have to develop the language of what will be allowed in there, and what won't be allowed in there. But pretty much half of the site is gonna be in permanent protected green space, so each one of the lots will, you know, will, will be buffered by their neighbors, we are still taking all of the stone walls that have to come out, and we're gonna line the front of every, every lot is gonna be lined in the front with stone walls to get the established look. We have saved as many trees in the front yards as we can, to get these houses pushed back, and when we get to the tree replacement plan, you'll see that, I think we're planting 500 and some odd trees, so I think pretty much, we could make this look pretty much established right off, right off the bat. There's been discussion about this lot that has all the stormwater management areas, and I believe it's probably gonna be part of Lot 6. This would be Lot 6 here, it's probably going to take over that whole lot, but obviously, it's gonna have to be shared by the HOA on the, on the maintenance, and all that will be developed. There'll be, there'll be concrete monuments, it's kind of off here, but it's, the concrete monumentation, 25 feet on center, on all these fingers, and they'll be marked, the conservation area or protected area, and then it'll be 50-foot centers everywhere else, so it could always be monitored and enforced, if there'd been any clearing beyond those lines. So I think we can move on to the next plan. One of the things we were asked to look at also was, could we not build the septic reserve areas? And we studied that, I talked with Michael Campbell about it, and I believe, Michael explained it to me, that the health department can allow you to not build the septic reserve area, if there's a good reason not to, and if you have access to get to it at a later date. Some of the criterias that Michael explained to me was that the, I think there has to be like, for 15 feet past the last trench, at about a 15% slope, you have to carry that down before you could start your one-on-three slope down. So what was happening is, when we, we have grading studies to show it, if this was your last trench, your next, your top of slope before you tried to slope down is 15 feet away, and then you gotta go to one and by three. So what we found was, when we graded each one of these out, 'cause each one of these septicisms has three and a half feet of fill on it, and by the time you do that, you're...
For all six?
All six. Bedrock-controlled site. Maybe three, four feet of soil, I think they found pretty much throughout, is that about right, Bill? And, so what we found was, that we were grading pretty much halfway into the reserve areas, you'd be suffocating the trees. So, you know, maybe we were gonna save one or two trees, or I think maybe even six trees, but it, you know, you can't get to some of these areas, you'd never get to get it, get back here. The only one that we think it's possible to do is this one, because you've got great access, it's right off of the driveway, so this reserve area, we think, does not have to be saved, does not have to be built, and we'll make application for that, but we pretty much have determined that the rest of them will probably have to be built, because you're not gonna really save anything, and to try to get to them later is gonna, you know, you have a finished landscape, and to try to get to them later, it just doesn't make any sense.
You have pretty good access, don't you, on Lot number 4? The septic is in the front?
Yeah, but I think on Lot number 4, on Lot number 4, we were going to preserve one tree, so we're not gonna build it for one tree. It seems that it would make sense just to, just to get it over with.
Okay.
You're only gonna save one tree. Lot number 1, you might have saved three, three trees, but access is horrible. Lot number 2, you'd save two trees, access is horrible. Lot number 3, you could potentially save six trees in this area, but the access, again, is horrible. Lot number 4, you're correct, you've got good access, but you only save one tree. Lot number 5, you'd save two trees, bad access. Lot number 6, you could save seven trees with good access, so we'll kind of resolve Lot number 6, that's the one we should ask the waiver for.
If you flipped the primary and the reserve on Lot 6, would that make it easier to get to the reserve, if you have to build it later on?
Well, I think, Michael, do you always like to build the uphill one first?
Yeah, but even if you switch them, you have to do it this way, you're still gonna have trouble getting there, period, no matter what, you're still gonna...
Six?
There, oh, six.
On six, I'm just talking about six.
Six.
Well, but, but you see, with three and a half feet of fill, you would still have to start filling from the top. So, you know, we couldn't just, otherwise, you'd have this, you'd go down, and you'd have this weird bump in the yard, so that really wouldn't work.
Steve, do you agree with those, those figures in terms of the net savings of trees?
Yes. So this is our tree removal plan. One of the things, Randy, can you go to? One of the things that Steve had reviewed the plan thoroughly, and asked us to look at about 90 additional trees that were on the edges of the clearing and grading limit line. Go back, Randy, we're gonna go back.
Which one?
We're gonna, we're gonna get out of this, we're gonna close out of this. And they were on the clearing and grading limit line, and he requested, you know, if we went back to, where's our?
Where'd you drive? Here? Are your thumbs on?
You gotta get...
Oh, there you go, remove this, got it.
There you go. That one, the bottom one.
This one?
Yeah.
You got it.
And, you know, if we went back and looked at those 90 trees that were on the edges of the clearing and grading limit line, could we adjust the grading, could we add tree wells to try to save some trees? So we went and we looked through that, and to see what we could possibly do. And what we found was that, yes, that was possible on several of these, and we went through that, and, you know, we found on Lot 1, we were able to save, you know, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7 extra trees, and, you know, we went through each lot to see what we could save, and in the end, we were able to save an additional 29 trees by, by doing that. So when we did get to the tree removals, we went through the tree removal, the tree removals, we tallied everything up, and what we did was, we, we separated it to the native trees and to the invasive trees, and what we found was that the native tree caliber inches subject to replacement would be 1,156 inches, you divide that by 2 and 1/2 inches per tree, that would be 462 replacement trees for native trees that would have to be replaced. We also calculated the invasive tree caliber inches subject to replacement, for the invasive ones, that was 360 caliber inches divided by 2 and 1/2 for one tree, that's 144 replacement trees. So what we came up with was that we were gonna have to replace 607 trees at 2 and 1/2-inch caliber. And what we've gone then is, and we've broken that down, there's the protocols that, that the new tree, the new tree legislation, it actually helped us, because what changed has that the tree cal, the existing trees that are out there from 7 inches, or I think it's 7 inches to 17 inches, now, they're only subject to replacement at 25%, where the 17, 18 inches and up is 50%. Prior to this, it was 50% for everything, so it actually helped us since the last time. And then, of course, once we have our tree protocols, the replacement ratios that, you know, we did, I don't exactly remember, I think we had, you know, 50% of them were canopy trees, and another 25% understorey trees, and then the other 25% in, in shrubs. So we can go to that, the tree replacement plan, and the tree replacement plan is actually, now you gotta go back to the plan set, Randy. The submission. And, tree replacement plan, good. SP4 first, that's right, that's, that's fine, Randy.
Oh, thank you.
Thanks, Janice.
You wanna, wanna go back?
No, that's good, we can start there. I think you gotta keep...
Can't see it's so small.
You have to rotate your upside, your upside down. Okay, so what we did was, we blew this up to a larger scale, I don't know what happened, what happened? There we go, okay. We blew this up to a larger scale, we broke the site into two, into two areas, we've got lots 1 through 3, then we have lots 3, 3 through 6 on the, on the next page, and, you know, we've, we've had to site, you know, 500-plus trees. And so what we did was, we went along the buffer to the neighbor, and we tried to plant that very heavily, that would be a mixture of trees and shrubs, to get a very dense hedgerow going on in there. We've planted, you know, all in these front yards, we've also went in with the understorey trees, and we went into these understories to plant things like, you know, dogwood and hornbeam, that would be understorey trees. When you get out into the open yard areas, it would be maples and oak and hickory, that type of thing. And so we went through that, and as you can see, it's, it's quite a dense planting. The red, I believe, when you see these red things, I think what that is, don't be confused by that, that is the deer netting that will have to go around the, around the shrub masses. We just, what we try to do is, we do, try to do 8 to 10 shrubs, and we try to create masses, and keep it one species, so it looks, it doesn't look mixed up. And so that's what you're seeing with the red, so don't be confused by that. But when we had gone through this, and we have the same thing, and we went, we have the, it's all native species, and we went lot by lot, and we list the major trees, and we list the understorey trees, and we list the shrubs, and then we quantify the whole thing, and that's kind of how we came up with this whole thing. We also have a separated planting plan for, for the stormwater basins, and what we'll be doing at, at the basins, but one of the things in the new tree legislation that came up was that the planning board has the ability to reduce the requirement for replacements for, for the invasive trees. And we looked at this, so, you know, I think we said the invasive trees, we had to replace 144 trees, so we had requested in our letter to the planning board that they consider a 50% reduction, or instead of 144 trees, to replace the invasive trees to be removed, 72 trees. And what we did was, we went through, and we discussed this at our staff meeting, we met every other week with staff, and they asked us to show, well, what trees would you ask the planning board to not install? So we went through, and all these trees, you see that are grayed out, and primarily, we did it along this border here, because, again, you've got this big open space area here, that's kind of wet, will probably never be developed, there's no neighbors down there, as opposed to here, we kept all these trees, because there are neighbors, and we wanna get that really heavy. So, you know, they're all inside here, so all the trees, and again, you know, to get 535 trees on the site is a challenge, that's a lot of trees. And so, it's the areas that you see where we have these, these grayed-out trees, and again, most of them are gonna be in the understory, or at the edges, or adjacent to the undeveloped lot. Randy, can we just go to the next plan?
Sure.
SP4.
Four?
Four?
No, 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 you're right, six. So this is just a continuation, as you can see, of what, you know, of, you know, lots 3 through, this is lots 4, 5, and 6, and it's kind of the same, it's the same concept, we're gonna plant in the front yards as much as we can, of course, we gotta stay away from the septic areas, we can't plant over there, but we can plant around them, we can't plant in the town's right-of-way, so we're staying out of that. And, you know, so we're trying to get trees where we think we can, and in between, you know, we're filling in, you know, once these, once these wooded areas are cleaned out of the brush and the dead falls, and, you know, we'll go in there, and we'll plant with the, with the other trees, with the other understorey trees, and shrubs to thicken up those buffers, but once again, part of those 72 trees where we're requesting the waiver are these gray, gray trees, and, you know, we feel that they probably really won't be missed.
Could we go back? I had a question for you on lots 1, 2, and 3, where you've got that planting plan up against your, your western border, and the eastern border of your neighbors. You know, by installing such a very thick planting barrier, I'm concerned that you're going to impose, you know, an awful lot of shade and block sun, especially morning sun, to your neighbors. So by, maybe we should look at that area and remove some trees out of that area, maybe it's just too thick, maybe we should also use more shrubs down there instead of trees. You know, I'm concerned about, you know, removing, you know, people's access to sun, whether it's for solar reasons or other reasons.
I'm sorry, can we get to that plan, so we could look at?
Yeah, that was the one just before, it was lots 1, 2, and 3.
Excuse me.
Because it looks like it's right up against the property line, and...
We are, but, you know, it's interesting when you're out there, because it's kind of like this, we're up here, and then you get to the property line, and it starts dropping down to the neighbors, and that whole area is wooded, so the neighbors, the homes are really developed closer to Gary Drive, they're really not up there, so I'm not sure that it would affect them, but we could certainly look, look, look at it, if you could see where the...
What area you told me about?
Right here.
Oops.
Sorry.
I don't see it. It's stars, it's a star night.
But, yeah, sure, but, you know, we could certainly do that, and we could certainly add more shrubbery to create that. to create that thick buffer because this, this is really all wooded. Because it drops down and when you get to the backyards, that's where, that's where their yards are, so-
It's almost carved out, do you think it was carved out when the other, the Gary Lane rose, houses were put in?
Yeah, when they, when they built it.
Yes.
So, yeah, this, this site is really up on like a plateau.
Yes, yes. But because it's up there, I think even the, you know, putting the trees right on the property line and with that kind of density actually accentuates that kind of concern.
Yeah, well, I think probably it's a good idea to use the understory trees and more shrubbery because it'll create more of a tran- transition from-
Right.
-you know, being open to straight up, it'll create that transition, so, yeah, we could certainly do, do that. And I'm sure we could still make all the numbers work.
Um, and as long as we have this up here, I'm stealing a little bit of Bob's thunder, but one of the concerns or questions I have for you is, we're, we're building these detention ponds here. And you've indicated that the soils are very, very thin, we have a lot of bedrock. We have had so many issues over the years where people say that whenever a new development goes in, it disturbs the soil, disturbs the runoff and then all of a sudden their basements are wet. So what kind of assurance are we going to have here that this water's gonna go into the ground? And you've, yet you've indicated it's bedrock, so we have not much ground for it to go into. You know, the concern here is that we have runoff coming off that very steep area that we have and we're digging down and now we have impacts to these neighbors and, you know, we hear, again, basements are wet and we never had this before and what are we doing? It seems to me that we're, we're putting a lot of, we're putting our water here and it makes a lot of sense from the standpoint of engineering, but my concern is what the impacts might be to those neighbors.
Bill, you had done, you had done soil testing on these to, to confirm that that, those things would, would drain, correct?
Oops.
Hold on. Yes, Bill Beckman. Yes, we did infiltration tests for all the places where we're planting, putting infiltration structures into the ground. The soils are very receptive to infiltration. There's a considerable distance from the basins to the adjacent homes, so that gives a chance for the water to get down into the ground, into the, into the bedrock system. But you also gotta remember too is that we're really putting water into the ground which is already going into the ground initially. Uh, what we're doing is taking the water from the new impervious services and putting it into the ground, otherwise it was going into the ground.
Well, my concern is that you, you've indicated you only have three feet of, of soil and how far, how far can it go into the ground if we have bedrock underneath it? So my concern is that you're going to dig this hole and then we're just gonna have sheet runoff below the surface and, and I would disagree, I think some of these, based on the map, you know, this lot right here where we have most of the water is actually, the house is right about here, it's actually fairly close. So, um, I, I'm not saying it can't be engineered, but it is a concern because we have heard this so many, many times, when you put a development in, you guys approved it, and now my basement's wet. Never happened before.
Yeah, and, and you said that you're putting water in the ground when it's already going into the ground, but it's not going into the ground now in the concentrations you're talking about here. You've got, this, the, the road is essentially the, the high point, the ridge. And you're taking water from the other side of the ridge where the lots are through these catch basins and draining it into, that's the purpose of this. So you're accumulating, accumulating a lot more water on the other side of that ridge than you otherwise are now. Unless I'm mistaken.
Not, not to a large degree because there's a, the, the property sits on a north-south trending ridge. And you can only push so much drainage across a high point until the point where you try to do any more and you get this elevation change, it doesn't work. So, uh, when I get to my presentation, you'll see the sort of dividing line on north-south and it pretty much stays the same.
Well, you've got, all these roofs are going over there.
But the, not all of them, and again, the, the, the water that's falling on the roofs is now falling on the ground and running off in the same direction.
Okay, we'll wait for your presentation.
Yeah, it's not going that way.
Well, it, it looks like it is, but that's, we'll wait for your presentation.
Well, you know, and, you know, to your point, Mr. Chairman, maybe what Bill can do is consider, when we build this, to consider a, a, a clay trench, a clay barrier-
Right.
-and maybe stop that from, from wanting to hit that, that rock.
Exactly, yeah.
And start running down, so, you know, I think there's ways to-
Yeah, I'm sure there's ways to engineer it, but, uh, I, I think we're gonna need some kind of assurance on that point. Obviously with the Bob, but, you know, as a layperson, it was a concern and a layperson who reads the letters that come in complaining about us.
Yeah, I'm a layperson as a wet basement, so.
And he's miles away from here, so he doesn't want to be impacted.
I'm very concerned.
Randy, I hate to make you get up again.
That's okay.
Just wanna quickly go through some of the other, so, uh, the tree replacement plan we did, why don't we go up to, um, R1 roadway layout and profile? And so we have worked with Campbell Engineering and the town engineer to detail how everything's getting built and to demonstrate that, you know, all the driveways and the roadways can meet all the vertical and horizontal geometry required. And it's, it's a fairly gentle site, so, you know, what you can see is this dotted line represents the existing grade and you can see the proposed grade, so we've been pretty much run the entire road pretty much on grade. I think our maximum slope is eight percent, which is a handicap ramp, so, uh, pretty gentle grades, um, the, 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 the entire way. We still have some crossing of the Ts and the dotting of the Is to, to, to make sure that the town engineer is, is satisfied that everything's been, been addressed, but things like site distances and driving distances and, and all these types of things, we, we've looked through all that, that's been kind of hashed out and that's in the process of being finalized now. Randy, let's go on to the next one.
Here?
Yeah. So what, you know, what we were asked to do, we were asked to look at, you know, to make sure that there were clear lines of sight as people were pulling out of their driveways, of course, this reads a lot better on the plan than it does on a, on a screen, but, you know, each driveway, it, it does have clear sightlines for about two-hundred feet each, each way, we have profiles to go with each one. If you can go to the next one, Randy. I think one of the concerns the town engineer had was whether we were gonna need any easements over adjacent properties where the sightlines will happen and that is the case. Where we have the point of curvature on the road and, you know, these folks coming out of lot five, for instance, as they look down the road to see what's coming, they're gonna be looking across and the same, you know, conversely, this guy traveling here, he's gonna be looking over here. This is the property line where our stone wall is, our stone wall is low enough that you can look over it, but they will be looking across the yard here, they will be looking across a part of the yard here and, and a part of the yard here, so there will have to be sight easements put together in favor of the town, I believe.
Yes.
In case they have to be-
Which town council will review sight easements.
Uh, just to make sure that they're clear. And I'll see, Randy, I, I, look at the exercise you're getting. Driveway profile, same thing. You'll see, you know, pretty much they're, they all pretty much, you know, gentle grades. You know, we have a little bit of cut and fill going on with, you know, how we're, we're doing it, but pretty much it's, it's, it's pretty balanced, we pretty much are following the grades, uh, pretty much the whole way. It's, like I said, once you're up there, it's a plateau, it's, it's all pretty gentle. And I think the last plan we had developed was the preliminary utility plan. And that plan is also still being worked, I know Michael is still working on the, on the water main study, but the utility plan. And we're still waiting for our surveyor to update the survey to pick up the area utilities, catch basins, whatever's out there in, in, in the street, we're still waiting for that to happen.
Can I say one thing, Jerry, about the sightlines? Have to be based on thirty mph because twenty-five is only approved by the board based on consideration by the police chief, but all the new roads that go in are always thirty.
So if we have to adjust it, would Michael be checking it? And if we gotta adjust it, we'll adjust it. But I, I think we tried to be conservative when we were doing these things.
Well, you used two-hundred, but you might have to adjust some for the gradient, which might increase it five, ten feet.
Yeah. I, I think on the dynamic, it was, I think it was like one-eighty.
Plus, the eye height has to be consistent throughout, can't have four-twenty-five on. At least the driver's eye height has to be the same for both, the approaching vehicle and the corner driveway. Three-two-five, three-point-five.
We'll adjust it.
You'll, you'll add a little bit more too, you have to tweak that.
Yeah, I, I, I don't think it's, I think it's all, it's all gonna work. Well, what we found was, pretty much as you're driving down, your view pretty much stays within the right-of-way, 'cause it's not like we have hard corners. So it, it's pretty clear. But I think what we, what, what we're showing on this plan, and of course, it doesn't read very well in, for some reason, when it gets to this, but I think what Michael is proposing to do is run the water main up the middle of the road, I think his, he would have preferred to keep it on the side of the road.
I wouldn't recommend it up the middle, Jerry Morschel will never allow that. Because during installation and repairs, you're right in the middle of the travel lanes.
Don't you want, you need to have your distance from catch basins?
Michael, you need to go to the microphone.
Yeah, yeah, good. And wasn't it also-
He's coming.
And wasn't it also that he didn't like cakere either?
Before you do the cemental, all I can say, before you do the cemental to the county, please meet with Mr. Morschel.
Absolutely, absolutely. No chance of leaving us.
Remind me, we, we've seen so many iterations on this, is this now a conventional or a conservation?
Conventional.
Conventional, okay. So we're, we're kinda stuck with this road width. I mean, I'm hearing this thirty miles an hour, it's a sixteen-hundred-foot long road, I'm wondering, do we need a highway here, but, okay.
So, you know, this, this will be tweaked, I know Michael's still working with it, I know he's, he's fighting back and forth whether he can, he's got the cakere issue or the middle of the road issue, it was complicated, I know he was going back and forth with the highway superintendent on that. But, you know, the, the electric and telephone would be on one side of the road and, you know, stormwater and, and septic, so it's pretty much roughed out, but it still needs to be finalized. So that kinda goes through the site plan package and I know Bill wanted to talk a little bit about the stormwater unless there's any questions before we move on.
Any questions? Jerry, okay.
Lot of work tonight.
That's one. Were you driving yourself there?
No.
It loses its hangup.
His USB device is not recognized. I don't know.
Can we use the one that gave us the report?
What?
We want a report. Stormwater?
It's working out, it's working out.
All right. Do you wanna try? All right, uh, yeah, my name's Bill Beckman, uh, my role in this project was to develop the plan for managing stormwater and runoff from the, uh, proposed development. We have two project, primary project objectives to resolve and meet. One was to satisfy the town's requirements and the other is to satisfy the New York City Department of Environmental Protection requirements. The town requirements basically are summed up by no increase in runoff rate or volume leaving the property. New York City DEP requirements, because we're in the New York City watershed, we need to meet the requirements of their water quality, quantity calculations, which addresses both rate of increase, rate of flow, volume and also provides for enhanced phosphorus removal for improving the runoff quality. As Jerry mentioned, the process involved communication and a number of meetings with town staff, town engineer in particular, and the review at various stages was very helpful and the board should understand and recognize that their assistance is appreciated. Uh, okay, Jerry, if you could go to figure two. I'm jumping. I, you gotta go to the figures. If you just minimize that, 'cause it'll come back.
Figure two.
Go to figures at the bottom. One more, one more, one more. There, nope, next one down. Yep. And then, uh, just move to the second figure, hit the arrow to go down. Then one more. Okay, that one there. Okay, this, this particular figure is just basically shows the existing topographic conditions for the property. We're looking at twenty-point-five-five acres. As Jerry mentioned, moderate slopes on the property and currently the existing cover on the entire property is, is woods. In the, this particular evaluation, the, like I said, the ridge center line moves up through the property, sort of along that heavy dark line. And to get better definition and look at the effects within the, the development itself, we broke it down into twelve sub-drainage areas, again, all outlined by the heavy dark lines. They're shown on this particular figure. And of note is, we aligned the drainage areas on the western side of the property to correspond with the property boundaries for the lots adjacent to us, so we could look at the runoff increases or decreases for each particular lot relative to what's going off our property. On the eastern side, it was set up more with the topographic control and the design points, there, there are fewer of them. And we're heading down into the undeveloped wetland area on the east side of the property. Using the hydroCAD model, we analyzed the runoff for the one, two, five, ten, twenty-five, fifty, a hundred-year storm for these existing conditions. All right, if you can go to the one down below. That's good. Okay, this shows existing, or proposed conditions. Here, that's where the tan coloration shows the remaining woods surface cover, the, the green is, would be lawn areas, brown would be pavement areas. So you get a sense of how the surface cover is changing under proposed conditions. Here, the dark lines for the sub-drainage areas are a little more clearly seen. But again, that, that east-west divide still runs pretty much right through the center of the property as it did before. In fact, it even shifts a little bit more, so there's a little more coming over to the east side of the property. And again, we use the hydroCAD model to evaluate the runoff for different storm events. Jerry, if we could go to tables, so just minimize that. And go to, into the next file, the tables. If we could go to the very last one. I don't know if you can zoom in on that at all.
I don't wanna do that.
Click on this up here, maybe?
Twenty-six-point-four up there.
Or go over here, hit the arrow and... Okay, that works. Good. Okay, so this is a summary of the results.
Can I say one thing?
Sure.
It was my understanding, and I don't agree with it, but when you did the pre-development runoff, you used total site, which is twenty-point-five acres, right? To get all these design points? When you did the post, based on what I saw in your summary, you put in there that you'd only use the areas within the clearing and grading limits?
That was for, no, that was for the DEP evaluation.
Okay.
For the town, we, under exist, and proposed, we still used the twenty-point-five-five acres.
You used the twenty-point-five-five, okay. I just wanted clarification on that.
Right, okay. So, uh, under existing conditions, for each of the twelve drainage areas, we have evaluated- we have evaluated, calculated for the peak runoff for the hundred-year storm event and the peak runoff volume. And if we go over to this next set of columns, that's the proposed conditions without control structures, just with the development. And you can see there's increase in this particular drainage area one in both the peak flow and the volume. So that highlights something where we need to do some management. However, in the second drainage area, because of the way the proposed lots and configurations are showing, there's a decrease in the peak runoff and there's also a decrease in the volume. So that particular drainage area doesn't require any management structures to be employed. So using that type of approach, went down through all the different drainage areas to see where there were increases and where there were decreases. And we focused putting in the stormwater controls on the areas where there were increases. So we could knock those down and get to the point where we don't have any increase over the property. So if we can get to plate one, that'll summarize the proposed stormwater controls in a visual manner. Can we just minimize that, 'cause we'll be coming back? Plate one, there you go. Okay, so this, this plate just provides a summary of all the proposed stormwater structures. The field testing, there's considerable amount of field testing that was done, not only on septic, but also with regard to the stormwater system. We did about thirty test pits were excavated and we did sixteen infiltration tests. The average infiltration rate was about twenty-two inches per hour, which is good for infiltration. And all the testing was observed by DEP as well as town personnel. Limiting factors that we found were mentioned already to some extent, but we had to maintain a one-hundred-foot setback for infiltration structures from all the leach fields. So these, these circular-type areas around all the leach fields mean we couldn't put an infiltration structure in those type of areas. So that ruled out a lot of area that we could use.
Is that a DEP rule?
Yes.
Okay. That's good, because they could actually ask me tonight to ask that question so now I don't have to ask it. Thank you. I hope he's paying attention at home.
And then the, as indicated, a lot of places where we did testing, there was shallow bedrock. We needed at least five feet of soil in order to consider putting an infiltration structure in a location. So to the, goal was, to the extent we could, we wanted to put water back into the ground to simulate the natural current conditions. And as a result, we were able to put in considerable amount of infiltration, but not nearly enough to get to the point of no increase in runoff from the property. We have a main bank of infiltration chambers up in the northwest corner. Another bank here, which is pulling runoff off of the roads and addressing that. The infiltration basin is proposed, pulls in runoff for most of the road from the high point down and from some of the front portions of these lots. And then we have some smaller areas to pick up runoff where we can from roofs or pavement, driveway pavement. In all in all, we're proposing about one-hundred-and-eighty-three infiltration chambers with all those structures. But again, that didn't get us where we needed to be. So one of our other options was to create some detention. And that was achieved by the use of a detention basin. And then we're using underground storage chambers or vaults, which are these type of symbols. In the southeast corner, again, there's a sprinkling of them at various places throughout the property in order to pick up runoff where we can based on the site conditions and where runoff is being generated. All in total, we've got about sixty-seven storage chambers proposed as part of the plan.
Do the storage chambers actually perform as infiltrators? Or are they just containers and then when you reach a certain level, they spill out?
They, they have a restricted outflow so the water comes into them, it's stored during the peak portions of the storm, and slowly dissipates out over the next day or so.
What's the mechanism for that? I mean, how does that work? Does water comes in high? And so how does it get out? And how is it managed, its outflow managed in terms of the time factor?
Well, the, the outflow is controlled by the diameter of the, like, the outlet on the tank.
Okay, and where's, and where is the outlet? At the bottom of the tank?
It's at the bottom of the tank. So in theory, over the next day or two, that tank will drain and be available for storage for the next storm.
So, so going back to the point that Bob was making earlier about possibility of water draining down into the backyards of people along Gary. If you've got these storage vaults and these infiltrators, which are then releasing out on the other side of the ridgeline, on the west side, aren't they going right into the backyards of...
No, the, the only place we have water coming out of tanks on the west side is, or this, this set of tanks here. And any, and the drainage from those tanks is being routed through a connection to this catch basin in the intersection of Gary and Button Hook.
And same with these vaults here?
With these over here?
Yes.
And the detention basin also goes into those vaults. So when that overflows, that goes into the vaults and then any overflow goes into the existing stormwater structures on the road.
For each of the...
So, again, trying to get, understand the mechanism so we understand it. So the outlet at the bottom of the vaults, are those outlets that are then directed and actually connected to the underground storm system that goes to these, you know, stormwater basins?
Jerry, if you could jump ahead and...
Yeah, is it either pipes or is it going to the ground? I don't understand.
Setting up my presentation for me. Okay, if you could go ahead to plate...
Go to the ground's problem.
Let's say, plate four. Minimize that, Jerry. Right, right. And go to plate four, right here.
There's a blue line here that shows these all connected to, it goes down to this catch basin here. So I think that's what's happening there.
Okay, this, this particular plate is just provided as an example of setup for a stor, uh, underground storage chamber or vault. Typically have a catch basin or some other chamber that accepts the water initially from drains, roof leaders, whatever, and that controls water as it initially leaves there and goes into a pretreatment unit. In this case, that would be a sand, a sand filter. And water would be filtered. And then low level on that tank would take it into the vault where it would, as long as the rate was large enough, it would continue to fill up the vault. And there's a small diameter hole at the bottom where it would control the release of the water and it'll get into a larger pipe afterwards, which would take it down to a level spreader to lower elevation.
But in the example that we were asking about, this would not be a spreader. This would be a, a catch basin or a vault in the, in the street.
No. Well, okay, on the, on the southwest corner. Yes, that would go to a catch basin on the street, yes. But that, again, is a typical setup for a storage chamber. Mentioned that that has sand filter for pretreatment. The infiltration chambers may have a sand filter as well or the other pretreatment technique we're using is called a vortex unit. It's a unit where the water comes in off the side and is forced into a swirling pattern and the particulates and sediment settle out and then the treated water goes into the infiltration chambers or the storage vaults at that point.
So another question, so the ones at the southeast corner here and the southwest corner are going down to the, the catch basins?
Correct.
But you mentioned in your example there that you've got some going to a spreader.
Yes.
So where, here, is there an example of the water being treated and going out through a spreader?
I can't read at the bottom of that page.
There are these, that's what these are. So those are the spreaders. And the reason they're so far downhill, because you have to get them to run by gravity.
Okay, so the spreaders that are only going to the, not to the Gary lane, not to...
They're pretty much going the other way.
They're going in the other direction.
In the direction, right.
But I, again, could you do me a favor and put up the previous plan that shows the overall system?
Oh, Jerry, where, where are you interested in? Because we've got other plans that just are larger scale. Okay, if you could put up 1A.
But the system on, it seems to me, just for, again, a light person, the system that you're designing on the left-hand side of the, the east, the western side of the property is not an infiltration system, it's really a direction system. You're just basically holding the water and basically directing it down to the storm bases. Surge panel, okay.
Well, what they do is they reduce the flow and wherever they do increase the flow at the design points, they do a downstream study. So that's what they do, that's why you have each design point. You can see whether it's gonna be reduced or increased. So wherever it increased, they did a downstream study to demonstrate on every impacts. So what you did in this report...
So, but the detention area, these are going to be infiltrators, though? That will infiltrate and then if it gets to a certain level, then it will flow out?
The boxes you see with the Vs are the vaults and the, the, such is the infiltrator.
Got, no, I got that.
This is a detention basin. Its primary function is just to detain water and slowly release it over time. And it'll serve in the same capacity as the chambers, the storage chambers.
My question?
I'm sorry. The overflow, again, for those will, we say, be directed to the catch basin and I have some information, we've looked at that.
Okay.
So my, my, my question is, this array here, the vaults? I don't see, where's the water coming from that fills those vaults? I don't see any structure for that.
From about this part of the road down to here, these catch basins are being piped reverse gradient back to these vaults.
Reverse gradient, are they, is, is this a force system or...
No, it's, these are gonna have to be deep.
Okay. They're deep enough so that it does that?
Right, so it runs backwards.
Okay, got it. And there's no, there's no sand filter for that? That I see.
Probably a sump in that first basin, isn't there?
I don't see anything, or vaults?
I don't see, we may have to add one.
And I don't see one here either for this system.
Well, that one, there is one, I think, right there.
Is there?
SF, I see.
SF, but it's very, it's very small compared to the rest of the water that's being stored and retained. Is that typical?
Yeah, that, they're pretty much at scale. That's at the size of the...
So do they ever get, do they ever sort of eventually not do the job? I mean...
Well, all these structures are...
I mean, again, whatever it is they're filtering out, does it sooner or later contaminate the filter itself and it doesn't do the job anymore?
Well, again, all, let me go back to the beginning a little bit. All these structures, particularly the pretreatment structures, are designed and intended to treat up to like a, a certain portion of the flow and the runoff. They just don't have the capacity to address the peak flows from a hundred-year storm events. So they all have bypasses that when the flows get too large, the water would go around the pretreatment structures and go straight into either the vaults or the infiltration chambers.
I'm not, I'm not talking about the peak surge. I'm talking about the gradual buildup of sediment or whatever.
And part of the maintenance plan will be to routinely check the, the pretreatment units, either the sand filters or the vortex units, and clean them out as is needed. But that's the whole purpose for them, because you don't want that material getting into these other underground structures where it's more difficult to maintain.
So, and that will be the responsibility of the HOA to protect it against degradation and then you'll have the maintenance plan?
It'd be a comprehensive maintenance and inspection program that Jennifer and I will have envi- will pass to review with the attorneys who go over, which is only be part of the AO. The only maintenance we're gonna have, as far as Jerry's department, is just basically the catch basins and the street and that's it.
So the, the question I have about all that is, there, this is a pretty major facility here, which is doing a pretty important job, which is on this site. Is there, there must be HOA or some kind of easement situation? How's that addressed?
Yeah, it's, it's addressed the same way as any other property that has stormwater management facilities on it. And there's a standard stormwater management maintenance agreement and easement agreement. So it serves two purposes. One, it requires the property owner here. It will be, I guess, likely maintained by the HOA. So it will require that entity to perform the maintenance specified in the SWIP. There's a specific maintenance protocol that's, that's spelled out in the, the stormwater maintenance plan. And then it also is an easement agreement to allow the town the ability to, if something is going wrong or if the owner fails to maintain, it allows the town access to that property to go in and do whatever maintenance needs to happen and then charge it back to the property owner.
And so these, but these other ones, which are really site-specific, are the property owner's responsibility, is that right?
That's my understanding is how it would be structured. But the same stormwater maintenance agreement would apply an easement agreement.
To each property owner?
Yes.
Right, got it, thanks. Okay.
All right, so based on this proposed plan, I reindicated the number of different structures. The storage volume that's being proposed with, between the infiltration chambers and the vault is about one-hundred-and-thirty-seven thousand cubic feet. What's required to be stored by the DEP extreme flood requirement is about eighty-six thousand. What's required for the DEP runoff reduction is only about twenty-one thousand. So that excess storage between the eighty-six of the DEP and one-thirty-seven thousand that's being provided is what we needed to do to meet the town requirements of no runoff increase from this property to the adjacent properties or offsite properties. So if we could go back to table eleven, Jerry. Hopefully it's, I'll put a tab up at the top somewhere. Tables are done here. It's the very last one again. Thank you. Okay, so this last set of columns here is the proposed conditions now with the control structures. So you can see without the controls, we had a peak runoff of twenty-four point five nine CFS. With the controls, we have it down to point two five CFS. The volume was, without controls was two point two four. With controls, it's down to point two four. Of interest to note is that from existing to proposed with controls or even without controls, these drainage areas, that should be three there, two, three, four, five, those all align with the property owners, properties along the western side of our site. You can see that across the board for those five, four or five drainage areas, there's relatively significant decrease in the amount of peak runoff as well as volume that's going on to those properties from this...
From existing to when, after, after treatment, after your plan?
Okay, and then just, so as a result, we didn't have any, total site-wide, when you compare existing to proposed with the controls, we have decreased site-wide peak runoff volume. There's a decrease from existing to proposed, so site-wide with method requirements. Two drainage areas had slight increases. And for that reason, town engineer asked us to look at that a little bit closer, which we did. Jerry, if you could find figure four.
Not a table, right?
Not a table. Figures are right there. Unless you already have a figure tab open at the top. Down here, down here. You're not looking. Right there. You're looking at the screen. You're looking at the screen, not the.
Down?
Down, yes please. That, that one there, that's good. Little more, little more. Do you use that, these arrows, right? Okay, down one now. Good, that, that's it. You know, all we were trying to do with this figure is visually summarize what was in that table we were looking at. So 9.10, which was the 10th drainage area, we had an existing amount, this is for peak flows, we had an existing amount and a proposed amount, and here you can see there's a little bit of an increase. Same thing with this particular drainage area, drainage area nine at the design point, a little bit of an increase. So as we start accumulating them in this water course as we go downstream, we then run into the next design point, next drainage area, there's a decrease. So when you start, again, accumulating them at this point, the proposed is less than the existing. So going into this, this pond here, the peak runoff under proposed conditions is going to be less than existing and as we continue on leaving the site from the effects of all the drainage areas, the proposed is reasonably less than the existing. And we also did that along the east side, along Darby, Gary Drive, and here it's more significant. I think it says about 22 under existing and I think it's around 10 under proposed. So we've reduced the peak runoff in this water course by about a half.
So, I, I have a question about, this is designed for a certain event threshold. I mean, it's, I don't know, it's a 50-year storm or?
We've been talking about 100-year storms.
Okay, good, so just a question about that. This is, 100-year storm is assuming that this, all systems are working for the 100-year storm. Beyond that, once the systems are saturated, would you get more, a lot more runoff? Because you have a lot more impervious surfaces that are now getting into these streams than you would have, than you would have in the existing condition?
Depends on the storm event.
Right.
Well, we only designed to 100.
Right.
You can use 500-year storm, but every guidance and specification and publication does not recommend 500 because it'd be so cost prohibitive. Everything goes up to.
I'm just asking a question whether that's, that's fact.
I mean, it's probably going to be over, no doubt, it'll probably be overtaxed, it's nothing designed for 500-year storm.
I'm not suggesting it's designed for 500, I'm just asking a question.
Yeah, what you've probably heard recently.
Put this on me.
What you've probably heard recently.
Why are you causing these big storms?
Walk outside right now.
Even something worse than that is when you get three inches of rain in a half an hour.
Right. I'm just.
So what is it, what is the nine inches, is that over a 24-hour period?
It's over a 24-hour period.
But what you've probably.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Hearing a lot about recently is with Hurricane Florence and all the rain down in the central east coast and the ground already being saturated. And yeah, that means that there's going to be more runoff than if.
That's fine.
Ground is not that good.
Understood, understood.
And also when the ground is frozen in the winter, if you happen to get a big rain event in the winter instead of snow.
Right.
That's not going to go away.
Okay.
Because the standard of the design is the 100-year storm event.
I just have a couple of observations, in my years with the town, Gary Drive is extremely wet. I mean, there's a lot of, you know, stream flow through that entire road system and subject failures on a, you know, fairly regular basis throughout its history. When, when you did your stormwater plan, would, would there be any difference if you used more of the western side for your drainage points to send more water to the western side because you have a large weathering system below?
Again, we're.
Would have that made much of a difference in terms of how much water? I know you're reducing the, your, your post flows.
Yeah.
But because there's an inherent problem already in Gary, could you take more water from the east side and direct it towards the west?
The west side to the east.
West to the, yeah, right, west to the south.
The problem we have is that ridge that goes down, north-south ridge down the center of the property. Now, we can't get water to flow by gravity up and over the ridge.
Well, you did that about the southwest corner, so we could make it deeper.
Except you'd be trenching through rock to do it.
Right, yeah.
I was just curious because.
Yeah, we looked, we tried to pull as much from the west side of that central divide as possible based on the grading and positioning of homes and pavement as possible.
And the road width, Bob, is it 24?
Standard code is 20 foot plus three foot, three plus two. Based on the code, the swales.
So if you go down one figure, Jerry?
Keep in mind too, I mean, not that I'm sticking up for the athlete, they, they reduce the flows along that corridor to begin with by how much, Bill?
By maybe half a foot.
I mean, that's very unusual, so when the people come out and say they're getting more water, we have a report to call back on too.
Yeah, that's good. This is similar, last one was for peak flows, this is for volume. Again, there was a little bit of increase in these drainage areas here. And a slight increase of .02 acre-feet makes it to the pond. We did a calculation up here to, based on the area of the pond, how much that rise, that increase would cause a surface to rise and it was like 3/100ths of a foot. And then as it goes out of the pond, the other contributing areas, the proposed volume decreases so that leading, leaving the site and getting into the drainage courses to the north, it's going to be less than existing. Similar along Gary Drive, at the bottom where everything has been accumulated, you've got about, I think, it looks like about seven tenths of an acre-feet less volume going through.
2.46 versus 1.16.
Okay, so that's over an acre-feet. And if you go down one more. And because we were looking to run the discharge from those vaults and detention basin into that catch basin at the intersection of Gary Drive, which is right here, the catch basin, at the request of the town engineer, we, we looked at the capacity of this 24-inch culvert which leads from that intersection into the open water course that goes further to the northwest. To do that, we defined the drainage area that contributes runoff to that set of catch basins and to the critical catch basin. And we determined that for a 100-year storm event, the peak flow is 38.3 CFS. Of that, 1.99 CFS was, was being contributed by the site already. And we then calculated the capacity of the 24-inch culvert and that came out to be 55 CFS and change. So under existing conditions, that culvert has the capacity to accept the runoff from the drainage area that contributes to it. Now, when we look at the amount of water being contributed by those vaults and stormwater devices in the southwest corner, the peak flow which was identified on table 11, which I'm not going to ask Jerry to go find again, was .25 CFS. So right now the site is contributing 1.99 to that catch basin and that culvert. We're going to be putting in .25 as a peak. So we're confident that we're not going to be overtaxing a particular culvert with this, this proposal.
Very good.
And that pretty much takes care of it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Jerry, any thoughts, comments?
I think, I think just bringing it back a bit, you know, the applicant continues to show a zoning compliant plan. You know, everything that they've demonstrated, you know, there's no inconsistencies with the layout. You know, Steve's looking at the trees, Bob is looking at the stormwater. We haven't seen a subdivision like this in a long time. One of the things I wanted to remind the board of is the recreation fee requirement. And I would advise the board that per, per both Steve and Bob's concurrence, to move this to public hearing. I think that the changes they've made based on the last time you reviewed the plan have much improved the plan. They've managed to do what we've asked of them and still keep a majority of the open space and the protected open space, which I think is good. One of the things, this is an unlisted action in accordance with CECL, you already distributed your notice to be lead agency. So prior to opening the public hearing at your next meeting, you'll have to adopt your.
Determination.
Your determination. I don't foresee there being an issue given all the work that they've done and the presentation they made tonight, so it's really up to you.
Okay, thank you. Bob, any comments?
Yes, basically with ST1, I think you provided some clarification on the areas that you use for pre and post. But still, I would like further clarification in the report and have a summary table of all the post areas that you have with all the subwatersheds.
Okay. We can talk on that.
Just so we're confident, not confident, that we used the same areas for the pre and post. And on ST2, it's the same thing, just for clarification. It's a lot easier if you show all the design points on the routing diagram. So we can see exactly where they are. And when you do the summary sheets for that, show the deep design points, I can see where you're getting all those numbers from, which you incorporate into the table. ST3 basically is just, just for clarification, so I can track everything and check it a little bit better. But all in all, they've done a commendable job. Just give a map with a 1 to 40 because the maps you provide, it's just so tiny, I can't see it, I can't read it too well. ST4, based on the DEC requirements, I think you should just give a better accountability or accounting or bookkeeping of why you can't beat some of the green infrastructure as stated in the DEC manual in chapter 5. ST5, I don't think you did yet, on the actual stormwater system and the roadway system, just make sure that it can safely handle a 10-year storm. But keep in mind, it needs safe passage for 100-year storm event, so we know where the overflow would go and it doesn't go down someone's property. ST6 provides stormwater profiles of all the conveyance system. ST7 is basically just the East, East of Hudson standard NOI. ST8, obviously it needs DEP approval as well, which I'm sure you'll be working on. ST9 and 8 pertains to the maintenance and performance guarantees for the stormwater facilities. NRD1 is basically sightline comments I had with the sightlines I mentioned before when Jerry was giving this presentation, they have to be based on.
Bob, you skipped ST10, would you make the recommendation that we do require the bond, et cetera?
Oh, absolutely.
Okay.
Absolutely. NRD1 is with the sightline, keep in mind, everything's going to be based on 30 mph. A couple of minor comments on the, on the profiles. NRD4 is the typical road section, should show a current drain which may be required if you hit any subsurface water during the roadway construction. And also too, I don't know if you're going to need it, you may need some guide rail and if you're going to put guide rail on a town dedicated road, everything's got to meet New York State DOT spec. Can't put no weapons out there. Basically after that is utility comments. I think you did a good job on the utility plan. But I think you have to leave a little bit more detail on the drainage plan, that's for the town road system. I think you're still working on the water main, Michael, so keep in mind when you do come in with plans with that, we have to sit down with Jerry to make sure they're all okay before you submit to the county. U3, all the plans should indicate all the existence of inverts. The plan should show the eight-inch water main, but I'm sure Michael will do that. Obviously, the water main needs to be approved by the Washington County. And when you do the work, you'll have to get street open prevents from highway on all the associated roadways. And then I have general comments as well. According, according to the section 1, there's any inspection fee, you have to submit a cost estimate to determine the estimated 3% inspection fee. GC2, I was just talking with Jennifer before, there'll be various and sundry easements and agreements they'll need for this because it's going to be a town dedicated roadway, so I highlighted them out, there'll be a lot of work on that to review those. And then GC3 is just general notes. And that's it?
Okay. So going back to your memo, are you recommending that we look at some sort of park area within the subdivision? I guess that's an option that we have if it's up to three acres.
It's an option you have, or you can settle on a fee in lieu of.
But is there a recommendation to consider?
I don't have a recommendation, I, you know, I can tell you, we've spent a very long time with the applicant planning the layout of the subdivision. At this point in time, it really doesn't make sense to try and create a recreational facility on the site. We, I think it may be better served to do a payment in lieu of, in this instance.
And because the minimum would have to be a three acre.
Correct.
And that would be quite a big disturbance.
It's pretty odorous.
Yeah.
Okay. And again, I guess your memo agrees with the applicant in connection with the expansion areas that there's only one lot that makes any sense, okay. Okay, thank you.
I have one question.
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. Go ahead. I just have one question, I think, if my memory serves me, I think very, very early on in the application process, an, an actual preliminary plat was, was filed and reviewed by the board. Obviously, the layout has changed since then, I'm just wondering if the applicant intends to submit a revised preliminary plat for the purposes of the public hearing, I think that that should happen, showing that the new lot layouts.
Yep, yep. Okay, good.
Thank you.
Thank you. Steve, you had comments?
Yeah, I just have a few additional comments on open space. They will be putting in monuments and I've asked them to provide an example of the tag that'll be used, you know, what it'll look like. And, you know, they're working on that, but I think that'll be helpful for the board to see that.
Are you okay with the 25-foot?
Yeah, 25 is what we recommended on other projects, and I think that seems to work out pretty well.
So the 50 will be okay?
I mean, my preference would be to do even less than 25, but that might be a little odorous, you know, between people's homes, you know.
Like a curb.
Right. I've just seen, you know, just from practical experience, it's hard to not see encroachment over time.
Right.
You know, into natural areas and residential properties.
Steve, when you talk about the flags, it's, you know, little banners that are on springy, springy posts so that if kids are playing in the backyard and they're tripping over or running over the monuments with these flags attached to them, that they're, they're not going to fall and hurt themselves on these flags, they're not going to be sticks or?
Well, they're designed to be flush to the ground and it's a metal tag that sits on top of the post.
It sits on top, it doesn't, it doesn't stand up.
So there should be minimal trip hazard on that. It's primarily a benefit to help educate the homeowner, but also from an enforcement standpoint, if we do have to intervene, it's a way to at least, you know, track what.
You can go out and point to it.
Point to it and say, what are you doing?
Right, exactly.
We always have those things that we have outside of the used car places that balloons that go up and down. That would, that would probably designate the area pretty well, exactly.
Stay away.
Just a thought.
We had originally recommended a conservation easement for the protected open space and, you know, they've come back and requested that they'd rather do a homeowners association, which I think is fine. I mean, my primary concern, which, you know, Jennifer will work with the applicant, is to make sure that the covenants and restrictions are clearly spelled out, that, you know, we had provided some recommendations, you know, from the prior memo of, you know, what should be included in that, so they'll be working on a draft, I guess, of the language.
Will that be a separate document from the stormwater management document that will be something that will be filed also?
Yes, it would be separate, so for it to be a quote-unquote conservation easement, it would have to be held either by the town or by a conservation entity, not by the HOA. So the alternative would be a declaration of restrictive covenants that would lay out exactly how that area is supposed to be maintained and what's prohibited there, what's permitted. So it sort of serves this, essentially the same function, just a different mechanism.
Different, yep.
And one thing I think would be helpful too, because we see it a lot on, when we have site plans come in and if we haven't looked at it in 10 years, if we could have on the actual individual lots, you know, language that clearly identifies these areas as, you know, protected areas. You know, so that it jumps out for the attorneys and the title companies and the, and then for town staff too. -attorneys and the title companies and the, and then for town staff too, when they get an application, it's easier to track on that.
Yep, would be very helpful.
And, um, you know, the, the other question that came up is they've requested, uh, they've got a tremendous amount of Norway maples on the property, and so they've requested a, a reduction of fifty percent for the tree replacement for the invasive trees. And, uh, we looked at that, you know, in the field, and I, I'm recommending that that's a good thing. I mean, I think it's reasonable that they're still going to be planting an additional seventy, you know, two trees, you know, from the removal of invasives, but it does, uh, reduce a large element of, you know, Norway maples from, you know, the site. And I don't know if you know much about Norway maple, but they, uh, they pretty much prevent anything else from growing once it could establish, because they do what's called allopathy, but they send out a chemical inhibitor that prevents other vegetation and other trees from getting established within them. So, so there's, so that's a real good advantage in terms of an ecological perspective to promote the diversity.
So I actually had a question about that.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so I, I guess we're, is, is this sort of part of an incentive or a reward? Um, what, what would be the end objective in, in granting this, um, uh, this reduction?
Uh, one of the goals, you know, from a, pretty much a national standpoint now is where we've been, we're inundated with invasive species.
No, I understand that. Let me be more pointed about the question. In what way?
Diversity.
Right. So let me ask a more pointed.
Mm-hmm.
How would this actually motivate someone to take out a Norway maple, which they're probably going to take out anyway, because it's in the lot area that they're going to develop?
Mm-hmm.
So I don't understand why, why one needs the incentive to do it. It, and it, and it also occurs to me that a replacement tree is a tree which is occupying land and a, um, uh, an area where the Norway maple hopefully wouldn't be able to establish itself because there's a tree there, whatever kind of tree you want to put, a hickory or whatever it might be. So it seems to me-
Well, I think it is an incentive to, you know, provide them with, you know, I, I mean, I see it as an incentive because they're helping to restore some of the environment.
But they're doing it with fewer trees.
Well, they're-
They're taking the Norway maple out anyway.
They're still cutting the, the Norway maples. We're just not requiring that they put back-
But why not?
-the same replacement.
I mean, another, sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, I mean, I, they wouldn't have to take, I mean, do you, does the plan require, Jerry, to take all the hundred and forty-four out?
No, you aren't, let me just ask the question. You aren't going to take out a Norway maple that you don't have to take out for the sake, let me finish, for the sake of the development, just so you have to-
Take them out outside of the offer area, right?
Right. You're only going to take them out where you have to take them out anyway.
Right.
All right, we're taking them out where we have to.
Right. So I don't understand why this would be an incentive to do it.
Okay. I mean, it's the first time we've had, you know, this issue come up and-
And I, right.
And I, I'd like to encourage and promote people to remove invasives. I mean, you are correct, they're taking them out anyway.
Here, here's another thing you could do, though. Another, another idea is, okay, take out the Norway maple you have to take out, and instead of replacing it with the tree, go take another Nor- Norway maple out that you don't have to take out, like in these, in these finger areas or in the concert, well, not a conservation area, but in the open space areas, or take two out, you know? It, that would be maybe a way in which you could get at-
Sure.
-at, uh, helping control the population of, of this invasive species. But to reduce the requirement to put a tree in seems to me as defeating the purpose, to me, anyway.
I think that we, we had looked at it, and I had discussed it with, with Steve. It, it was very difficult to get five hundred and some odd trees on the site. And it just seemed, it just seemed like overkill to put these in there to replace an invasive tree. And we, you know, we were sticking them in the woods just to get them on the site. So it, it seemed to make sense that, you know, we're, you know, it's going to be a very dense planting anyway, and it didn't really seem that, you know-
And the one aspect, Tom, is we, you know, we do have the tree bank, you know, that, you know, for the deficit that would occur, you know, from my perspective, because they're taking invasives out, I see that as a benefit. So I, I'm not sure that I, you know, feel that, are we penalizing them by also requiring them to contribute to the tree bank, you know, for removing an invasive tree?
Interesting would be, perhaps if you get a credit toward the tree bank for whatever shortages they have by taking out, as Tom said, more Norways than they need to, um, you know, because of their, their construction activities.
I mean, they chose to try to not have to have a deficit, you know, with the-
Right.
Right. To balance it, right. I understand.
To balance it, but I, that, you know, that's just the other reason. I mean, we, you know, they, they would have to contribute to the tree bank unless we adopted some other strategy.
Well, every, but they aren't the only ones who contribute to the tree bank. I mean, this is part of our standard, right, procedure. So, um, it seems to me that I don't understand granting relief on that, at that, at that part of the calculation either. And, uh, I understand you just said that we're just putting more trees in the forested area anyway, but that one area where you said that you didn't want to put the trees, it was on the northern end of the property, I think. And you said, we don't want to do these. And, but I looked at the, at the, your tree survey, and unless I'm mistaken, there aren't any trees there right now. So it, it's, I think that we, we have a principle of trying to, whenever we take trees out, we try and replace those trees on the property because it's all part of a local sort of habitat condition. And in that sense, I think that it would be great to, anything that we need to, any trees we need to put in, let's see if we can fit them into the property, even it'll, even if it looks like, gee, that seems like a crazy thing to do. A tree is a tree. At the same time, maybe there's another way to deal with the Norway maples in particular, which is to say, take out two others, right? Or whatever the ratio might be.
You could just do it by caliber inches. If you take out a twenty-inch tree, we could just, we could just back out that many.
But I would not reduce the requirement. If, if we're going to ask, ask them to put a tree in and not take out another Norway maple, I would make it a, the standard calculation.
Okay. Do we have that flexibility, by the way, to, to give credit toward the, uh, the tree bank with elimination of invasive species?
Correct me if I'm wrong, but I think by reducing the required DBH, that's in effect what you're doing. Because if they're, if the, the-
Right, right.
-required replacement is being reduced, then that unmet replacement tree value-
Mm-hmm.
Is then getting applied to the, to the tree bank fund.
Michael, are we permitted to, uh, have plantings in unused expansion areas once you build it out?
Just shrub, just no, no trees.
No trees.
So, so they could, could do shrubs, so they can use the formula for the-
Right, could help.
It's in the code, yeah.
Mm-hmm. I recall, we walked the site. I mean, it's just, uh, very densely populated with Norway maples. It's just, the saplings are just crazy.
So I, so I think if, if you give some, you know, thought to this and, and tell us, you know, what you think, if, if this makes any sense, these ideas.
So for our understanding is the preference would be not to give them any credit at this point, you know, in terms of reduction.
Well, incentivizing different ways.
Have them calculate based on total number. And then we could look at, you know, in terms of, in lieu of maybe tree bank, look at some kind of formula that if they take out six or eight Norway maples, we give them credit for some, you know, the diameter or something like that.
If there's, if the objective is, if the objective-
That will have to see if that's authorized.
Yeah.
Yeah, that, that, yeah. That alternative scenario, I think we'll just have to double check and see if that's authorized by the new legislation.
But if, if the objective is to, is to control the Norway maples, then let's control them.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, maybe, maybe the option is instead of the credit would just be applied to taking out maples instead.
That's what I'm thinking, but I don't-
Yeah, I don't know, sixty, if they got sixty Norway maples.
Right. That's kind of, that's kind of thing I'm thinking, but they got to work this out, if it makes sense to you guys.
For all my issues, I'm not sure there's anything in the code that gives, gives that kind of flexibility.
That's what you need to look at.
Because I mean, there's, there's an express provision that says that you may reduce the total required tree replacement DBH where trees proposed for removal, including invasive species such as Norway maples. So that's expressly included, that this alternative, um, mechanism, we'll have to see if there's any room there for-
I'm sure you have to figure it out.
It can disagree about why something cannot just be an agreement between the planning board and the applicant, that this is what, is how this will be treated, even if it's not explicitly stated in the law, in, in the tree code, as long as the applicant is amenable to the trade-off of taking more Norway maples out instead of replacing.
Yeah, well, yeah. We'll take a look at it and see if it's-
Jennifer, it's a strong preference that we follow the law.
Yeah, just, I just have a couple other items too, so.
Before we leave that one issue though-
Some things with tree replacements before that were, you know, where we did off, off-site screening with the agreement of the applicant, sort of similar agreement, similar flexibility.
But Steve, if we do that and we eliminate more of these Norway maples, it's going to open up more spaces for the trees that we want to replace. So it would be, as Jerry said, so, you know, overbuilt or over, over, over-
Well, one of the advantages, they could space out the, the replacement trees.
Exactly.
Exactly. So it really is a-
And to claim those areas that have, that we've, right, have cleared, yeah.
Mm-hmm. Because that's one concern with Norway maples, is that if you don't get the entire root system, and then if there's still other trees in close proximity, you know, it's easy for them to encroach and invade quickly. So-
Right.
And if you plant other new trees, it helps compete, you know, with that. Uh, one other aspect is we, we have a five-year maintenance and monitoring within the code. And it does give the discretion for the planning board to expand that. And, you know, we put in there to recommend a tenure because of the volume of trees. And it's consistent with what we've done on tropical crossing and, you know, several other projects where there's, you know, a large number of trees.
I think it makes good sense. Yep.
And same thing with the stormwater, you know, management plan is to, you know, incorporate, they could eat, um, I know Bob and I have talked, we prefer to keep them kind of separate plans and bonds and, you know, but that would be ten years as well on that.
Makes sense to separate it, too.
Yes, okay.
You have a different timeline.
Yeah.
The stormwater is a different, a little bit less.
Okay.
And, and one issue, which was an oversight, primarily because Fish and Wildlife Service just really came out with it in two thousand and sixteen, is, is the Indiana bat and then, you know, long-eared bat, you know, northern long-eared bat, um, you know, requirements. And what it means for the applicant is that they are restricted on when, you know, they can do the tree clearing on the site. They could go through and do, you know, the studies. It's a phase one study where they'd have to demonstrate that there's, you know, no known roosting habitat or, you know, summer foraging. But my experience with Fish and Wildlife is almost every site qualifies as foraging habitat. So even, even if they came back and said it's marginal, they're still going to recommend the restriction on the tree clearing. So my recommendation would be just accept that and-
Move on.
-going forward and plan your, your development around that.
So the removal would be limited to the time period November first to March thirty-first?
To November to March, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. Well, it just, it depends on your cycle of, you know, construction cycle, but, yeah.
Okay, great. That's it. Anyone else, anything? Any questions?
I have, uh, just one. This is a detail. Um, by the way, the landscape plan, the drawings are really clear. And I especially like the, the, the sort of subdivision plan with all the colors on it. That's great. I'm getting the age where that kind of thing really works for me, because I just need that kind of help. Well, you do a good job. I have a question about, um, about the cul-de-sac. And it's, it's, there, there, are there, are there two criteria? One is a, a fire access, uh, traffic circulation thing, vehicular thing. And Sabrina, does the other have to do with getting adequate lot frontage around a cul-de-sac?
Well, then one-third.
Yes.
And so this, this is eighty-five feet, and that probably-
That means the standards and, and code.
Standard and code, okay.
Radiant is two, five percent max is for the cul-de-sac, which they have.
Got it. Now, is, um, would there be a problem in, it's, it's a pretty big area. I understand it's necessary, but would there be a problem in creating a landscape island in the middle of that? I've seen it done before.
You know, we did that at Meadow Hill, and Jerry, DPW, have problems plowing that without destroying the island. And I've learned that after the fact with Meadow, not that they have to do Meadow Hill, but there's another subdivision that just happened, Belai. And, um, they may have problems with that, issues with that, with the way they plow it. Staying concentric all the way around, they just go across linearly.
Well, if it's landscape, though, they're-
Yeah, well, I don't know. It's just something you might want to have him look at or get his input on.
Okay.
Also a potential issue we see in the winter and prior things I've done in the winter when you plow, they don't, that, what was once a big cul-de-sac shrinks dramatically.
It does with the snow, when the snow's there. No place to put the snow.
Yeah, that was Jerry's concern. You can't go across it either. So you're kind of plowing in an awkward motion around the circle around something in the middle.
Right. Okay.
It's tough in that regard for snow removal.
Okay. All right, that's it.
Okay. So we have to make our determination, and we have to do that, Jennifer, before the next, before we open the public hearing.
Before you open the public hearing.
Next time around, okay.
We don't have material to do it tonight.
Right, right. So, um, we have some work to do, but when do we want to set up a public hearing here? Schedule it. Assuming you want to, I guess, do we have, we have adopt a motion to set it, schedule a public hearing. But when might that be, Janice?
December fourth. The deadline will be November twelfth.
Is that okay, Jerry and Bill and Michael?
That deadline is November twelfth?
Yes.
I just have to make sure that the surveyor can get flat on that. I don't think he can.
November twelfth.
Okay. So is there a motion to schedule a public hearing for this, um, application for, was it December fourth?
Yes.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. So we'll see you then.
So I'd like to just say one thing here about this whole process, um, which is that there is a, um, there's a maxim in, uh, my profession, which is it takes a good client for an architect to make a good building. And it seems to me, in this process, from my, um, participation in it, that the school district has been really terrific in working with us and, and with their consultant. And I think the product is something that I think we're all going to be proud of. I, I personally feel very good about it. I don't think that we often have this kind of success. I can point to a few where we have, and I think this is going to be one of them. So I'd like to commend you guys in putting together a good product and working with us.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay. We'll see you soon. Okay, we move now to a public hearing. This is a, uh, hearing for the Millwood Veterinary Hospital, PC slash two thirty-one Sawmill LLC, an application for a site development plan amendment approval, two thirty-one Sawmill River Road, New York Route one hundred in Millwood. Good evening.
Good evening. Michael Picarello, MAP Architects, representing Dr. Jeremy Tubbs, who unfortunately he has, he has lost power this evening in a storm. He could not make it. Um, we, we are here, um, looking to expand his existing facility. Um, the expansion would be the rear of the building, approximately a thirty by thirty-three addition, um, a single-story addition. Uh, with that, we would be, uh, dressing up and adding to the existing building. Uh, it's a, a flat roof currently. We'd be adding some parapets. Uh, so we'll be actually improving the look, the overall look and appearance of the building.
Do you have a sketch of those? I, I didn't see that in the, in the materials.
If, if the board hasn't already, we should do a motion to open the public hearing.
Yes, we haven't.
If you haven't. Did you do that?
No.
I'd recommend that you do.
An motion to open the public hearing?
Yeah.
Second. Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
So, um, here's a, a rendering of the front of the building with the proposed parapet on top. Currently, it's a flat roof. Um, so we think that will definitely improve the look from the, from the road of the building. And then, um, this is our addition in the rear. Uh, and because of the complicated, uh, nature of the existing roof, um, this was the best way to achieve, you know, a positive drainage off of the roof, uh, which they actually don't have a parapet on, on the, on the back section. Um, but again, uh, the front facade wouldn't change other than the, the metal, um, uh, manse roof and stuff.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
So, um, the biggest, uh, so the, the existing lot, uh, currently is a, is a paved lot. It's a non-stripe lot. Uh, there is a little bit of, uh, existing, uh, buffer, some screening on the, uh, on the southern side, uh, against, uh, an existing house or dwelling that's there. Um, the, uh, with the proposed addition, we were in a deficit of about three, three parking spaces. So, um, we went to the zoning board, and they were, they granted us a variance for three parking spaces. So now we'll have, um, the parking spaces that we proposed plus a handicap space. So we'll actually improve that aspect of, of the site. Uh, Dr. Tubbs actually has a letter from the, um, owner of the building next door, which is the Rocky's Deli and Hardware Store owner. Um, they- They have no, and I apologize, I don't have that letter with me, but the letter basically stated that they had no issues with parking there.
But I think you represented in your letter that you've never had any real use for that. You always have ample space now for...
Correct, yes.
Customers, your patients, whatever.
I've never, you know, so in my dealings with them, since they've hired me, I have never had a problem with Saturday or during the week finding a space, and typically I find a space right up against the building. So that's never been an issue. So the focus of the project is really the rear of the property. We've been cautious to stay out of the steep slopes. We're looking to avoid, you know, cutting down trees and to not affect any of the neighbors on the other side with excessive paving. We try to get the project very, very simple for him. So again, we're here looking for the site plan approval to begin to move the project forward.
Okay, great. Sabrina, you had some comments?
Very few comments, a couple notes on the plan. Due to the need to obtain a variance, it is considered an unlisted action. You have a neg deck before, or a part-two EAF and a proposed negative declaration before you for consideration. The applicant has addressed all of my questions, with the exception of identifying the site lighting on the plan.
Correct.
Other than that, they've answered all the questions. Garbage will be emptied, removed two times per week. He explained to you the variance that was granted regarding the parking, everything seems to be compliant. There's no steep slopes or wetlands or trees proposed to be removed. So this fits in nicely on the site, and the additions that they're proposing are compliant with the current code.
The garbage removal truck get access to the back of the back end?
So it's interesting. So the existing carding company, which is the same carding company as Rockies Deli uses, asked for the dumpster to be in the rear of the property, because that's where the Rockies Deli dumpster is currently. So they actually access it from the Rockies Deli. That's why we actually have a gate on the plans, we're showing a gate access, and that's simply just to be able to screen it off. But essentially, they're gonna be accessing it while they're accessing Rockies Deli, they're just gonna drive over and access Dr. Tubbs' dumpster. So it actually gets very clean, it's very neat, no one sees it. They're not generating a ton of garbage anyway, because it's a veterinary hospital, so they're not generating, you know, that's why they have a very small dumpster.
Do you have a separate area then for medical waste that's taken away?
That actually is, we've taken away from the, I know that from the other veterinary hospitals that we've worked on, that's a service that comes by and takes care of that.
That's separate.
Yes.
This is just regular trash.
It's typical trash, you know, papers and, you know, garbage, really, you know, not really...
Jennifer, does there need to be any formal agreement between the two property owners if the garbage is going to be accessed through the other property?
It really should be, yeah. Because I mean, there should be, just because, I mean, now, you know, I'm sure it's amicable now, but, you know, 10, 20 years in the future, who knows what's going to be on that adjacent property and whether the owner is going to be amenable to allowing garbage truck access to the rear of the vet property. So there should be some, yeah, there should be some agreement in place.
Since I've been here for like 25 years, Rockies predates me, I think Joanne's been there for that long, and the Hosted Animal Hospital's been there for that long, it's pretty stable right there.
Yeah.
More good businesses.
As far as I, you know, there's...
But you're, I'm not diminishing your point.
Yeah.
We can formalize it.
Plan for the future.
Ask them to formalize it in some kind of letter that's signed off by both parties, I guess.
Yeah, it would be a little bit more formal in the form of an easement agreement to be recorded in the county clerk's office.
Okay.
We can, we can explore the idea that it would be less than that. Maybe what we can do is put in the resolution that the, that access to the dumpster in the rear of the property through the adjacent property will be formalized in a mechanism acceptable to the town attorney's office.
Can that be conditional, so that wouldn't hold up by, as we're entering into the fall? My concern is something like that could take a while, because it's something that we could be conditional on a CO or conditional on a...
It's wired to a CO.
CO? Are you comfortable with that?
Yeah. To do your, you get your BP.
Correct, yeah, exactly. So they wouldn't hold us up. And again, the agreement's already there, it's about a formalizing it to a case to satisfy, to satisfy you.
Make sure that the protections are there.
Got it. So how, so you just described it may be less formal, how do I...
So the less formal option would be something that would not be recorded in the county clerk's office, but instead essentially a license agreement whereby the adjacent property owner allows the vet property to gain access to the dumpster. Essentially, it's the same language, it's just not recorded against the property, it's not...
As a deed, because that could, again, begins to, you know, for the other person, the other property owners, and now...
It's a little more heightened.
Attaching something to their deed, which may not be...
Right.
So is that a letter or a statement that I should draft, or have their attorney draft and get it to you to approve before everyone signs it?
Yes.
So...
Something written on the plan?
A note on the plan?
Sure. Access, accesses from the adjacent property, even though it's not, I can't compel...
Just to bring attention to the agreement that you guys...
And while we're on the topic of things on the plan, I just wanted to bring up the site traffic schedule that's on the plan. If that's gonna stay on the plan, we should just make sure that that, the times are accurate. There seems to be a couple inconsistencies regarding the start time, so...
Yeah, we had emails you about that, Michael, and you clarified the email, you just need to update the plan with that.
Just wanted to make sure that was...
I'll just...
What is behind the animal hospital?
Behind the property or...
Behind the property, yeah.
I believe there's a condominium, there's condominium complex.
Is that Pheasant Run?
Yes, it is, thank you.
So there's actually, it goes up a bit there.
You cannot see.
So this extending out to the back isn't gonna pinch on any property behind there.
No, there's, apologies, I don't have a photograph, but basically, the property goes almost, not straight up, but certainly goes up in a very, that's why it was very important for us to maintain the size of the addition, because I did not want to get into the steep, there was no point to get into that steep slopes and to get that, you know, there's just no point in doing that, so.
Okay. Anything else? If not, we have a negative declaration that's been prepared by staff. Is there a motion to adopt the neg deck?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And then we have before, say, draft resolution? Any issues or questions on it? If not, is there a...
We have to add in a clause about the license agreement.
The license agreement and to update the trial.
And a note on the, on the map.
Oh, and lighting? Or is that already in?
It's already in there, but the adjustment of the numbers for the traffic...
We condition that?
Yeah, we can, yeah.
Plus you're gonna put a note on the plan about the easement.
Yep, note on the easement.
On the plan, as well?
Yes, right.
Or license, if it's a license.
Okay. Okay, as amended, do we have a motion to adopt the resolution? Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Okay, all set?
Thank you very much.
So we have a few more minutes to spare. By the way, we have next year's schedules here. Pleased to announce, I'm trying to get it down to like five meetings for the year, but we haven't quite gotten there. So no meeting in early January, and again, just one meeting in September. Trying to...
Head in the right direction. Keep working at it, okay? Expect you to do better next year.
Until they give us a raise, by God. In any event, we have additional minutes here that Janice has prepared for us. We have the July 17, 2018 minutes to review and/or adopt. Does anyone have any changes on the July 17?
I do on the first page, because I was absent.
You were absent, if you were absent, we can't do it then. You weren't here in July?
I wasn't here.
So we can't adopt this right now?
Can't adopt it.
Press the power button again.
Says right here, absent. But it doesn't say it on the first page.
No, it doesn't say on the front page.
You were just absent for that one thing, maybe?
No. Otherwise, I would have been noted as coming in late or leaving early. I don't know where I was.
Well, we can put that in the minutes. Okay, so we can't do that one.
Yeah, I must have been absent, because I'm not quoted anywhere in here, and I can't imagine me sitting here for like three hours and not saying anything. You guys know me better than that.
That would be impossible.
There's proof right there.
No point, okay, very good. We have the July 31 meeting.
I don't have any changes.
I've got a couple.
Okay.
On page nine, line 37, he noted, this is me talking, quoting me, he noted that it was very difficult to find parking space there. This is him talking about the Chico's in A and P. Now that the Chico's had occupied the space. It's not always very difficult to find space. It's occasionally difficult to find space, so I just changed very to occasionally. If you could do that, Janice, I'd appreciate that. And then on page 10, line 40, Mr. Curley brought the discussion back to the front...
Whoa, that was a transformer.
That was something that blew.
Right?
That's a transformer.
It sounds like it was right there.
Oh, yeah.
Did that one just blow? For what, like a couple months ago?
It had to be right across the street.
Right outside.
Right outside.
Holy cow, that was frightening.
Is it on fire? Should we go look?
Should we look and see if it's on fire?
I'll go look, you're doing... No, she's doing minutes here.
Your car's parked out front.
If there's a fire, will you tell us? Just leave us, we'll get burned to death here.
Janice, I give you a ride, my car's parked out there, too.
Yeah, mine's too, wow.
Okay, that's, Mr. Curley brought the discussion back to the front elevation plan. You could change it to the proposed front elevation period. 48, Mr. Curley noted that existing buildings are old but not historical, so he saw no real value in the existing architecture, that's a little...
Where are you now?
I don't think it wasn't the transformer.
Forty-eight.
Why do you think it was?
I'm in 48, sorry, Janice.
There's nothing out, the cars are moving, there's nothing...
Well, maybe if you hire a miss close...
You ready?
Yep, I'm ready.
Okay.
You didn't finish while I was gone?
Did you change something at 48?
No, we're trying to now, sorry. We're not yet. We're about to do it. Janice, at the end of the first sentence where it says existing architecture, just insert the phrase, "other than it is representative of community context."
Representative of what?
Community context. And that's all I have.
Okay. As amended, do we have a motion to adopt the minutes of July 31?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And the last one, we have September 5, minutes of September 5.
I have a couple of things, well, a few things, but two of them are points of clarification in statements that I did not make, so I'm gonna throw it out there. On page four, line nine, where Mr. Tong was talking about, you know, the gray changes and the need to add an extra bedroom, he said, line nine, "as desirable as other units..." Two empty nesters and never nesters, wasn't that the point of the desirability of them? Or is my recollection...
Should it targeted market, maybe?
I'd rather say targeted market than assume was.
Yeah, what it was, yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
And on page five, line 20, and Bob, you're here to make this clarification, if it's appropriate. Page five, line 20, "the town engineer's memorandum pointed out that the stopping site distance of 47 feet for the townhome driveways, is that what that was referring to?"
Oh, that was the cars that were coming out of the garages, yes.
So...
I had a little study they had done, and they showed the distance, 47 feet, as I recall.
It just wasn't clear to me the way it was written.
So shall I be adding something?
That's up to Bob, but I...
You want to add from the garage entrance or exit? Just to clarify, so we know where it is.
Garage pad or...
Yes.
From the garage.
From the garage. Would not provide. That's fine.
And then, on page 10, I have a couple of additions of my own. Line 21, of line 20, 21, "three or six more schoolchildren," insert likely, would not be the make or break numbers. And then in line 23, "finding statements and determine whether it was, comma, for example, comma, to cap the overall density of the site or to allow for future development in other parts of town."
Okay.